Started putting two and two together thinking that must be. Education.
They just matter of looking at long boxes and figuring out where they go.
Charlie, how you doing, buddy? Good. Looking pretty good. The, uh, I was wanting to tell you that.
Okay. Four thirty folks like to call the meeting order. For public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east side of the commissioner's room, please. Roll call.
Meyer.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Knapper.
Here.
Raisig.
Here.
Blue.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have one change on the agenda that I have, we will not be discussing the fuel distribution system tonight. We'll table that. We'll do that in the next meeting, Russ, is that when it's coming up?
Hopefully it should be.
Any other changes or modifications? If not, I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Yes.
Do you have five yeses?
Want to remind everybody that we do reserve the right, the board reserves the right to enter to a closed session. Anytime that we feel it's necessary, we do have one scheduled at the end of the meeting. Move on to consent agenda, anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval as submitted.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as of, as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Me? Again, okay. How's that?
Can you have five yeses?
Thank you. Okay. Before we go into the Board of Equalization, I would like to make a introduction. Mr. Robert Simpson is in the back, are you Robert or Bob?
Robert.
Robert, got you, got you covered. Robert is our new... What do we have for a time?
Assessor Office Manager.
Assessor Office Manager, okay? And I think today was your first day, right? Okay? And you know everything there is to know already, right? You're getting to it. You're getting to it. Okay? That particular position is going to be basically running the office, they'll be, he'll be answering to both Lisa and Jean Bauer. And, uh, we're, we're tickled to death to have you. We're very, very excited what's, what's going to come out of that, out of that operation down there. I think under your guidance and with these two ladies here, things are gonna, things are looking good. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Where do you come from, Bob, what were your, what you about?
Robert.
Robert.
My background, I've been in financial services for about thirty years. Mostly mortgage, but doing a lot of consulting to big banks, Freddie Mac, Bank of May, Ginnie Mae. And, uh, so really worked on the mortgage side most of my life. And, uh, I came here in two thousand and ran a rural services for about five years.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Before leaving, uh, moved to, to, for human matters. We've maintained property here for about twelve, shoot, twenty years. So, that's my background.
Great, great, you're doing number tough.
I think it dovetails nicely with the assessor role.
Good, great.
I think, I think you're gonna be fine.
Yeah.
You've got, uh, I, I stopped in before I came in and kinda was sitting with him going over a bunch of stuff and Jean's been helping, I know Lisa's been helping, everybody's stepping up to the plate and, and we'll get the job done. Thank you again for accepting the position, Robert. Okay, with that, I need a motion to move into Board of Equalization.
I move that we move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close, please.
Can you have five yeses?
Yes. Okay, uh...
Okay, take it easy on me then.
Okay, the first thing we gotta do is receive the tax list corrections. Have a motion to do that, please.
I move we, um, receive the tax list correction.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Mark, okay to close?
Close, please. Now.
Can you have five yeses?
Ms. Bauer, you're ready to roll.
Okay.
Discuss, consider permissive exemption for parcel number zero one zero zero six two three five one, the Region One Office of Development.
Right, and this is just, um, they just purchased another pro- uh, property and are just adding it to their, um, list of properties that they have that they use for, I think, a residential, um, home for developmental disability individuals.
That, yeah, that's correct.
It was received in time, but they never, we never put it before the County Board of Equalization, it was actually received within the timeframe.
Okay.
So, it's already, it's already included in our budget, our tax money now, last year's budget. Taxes are already figured into this year's budget.
Well, they're tax exempt. They're tax exempt.
Yeah, but those taxes weren't prior to that, though, those taxes weren't.
Oh, for the...
From the point of purchase on, they'll be tax exempt.
What are they, a five oh one C three or what's your exemption status?
Region One Office of Human Development, um...
Permissives don't fall under this, that, that you...
They're, they're basically government, they're government agency.
Quasi-government agencies, they could be any of that.
Charitable education.
Charitable, yep, educational.
Why isn't it automatic, why do we have to vote on it? Do we have an option?
Well, this is a new property that they're putting into their...
It's a new piece of property, so that, that parcel number needs to be, needs to be voted on and put into their system. So, they, they don't automatically buy things and they automatically go tax exempt, they have to go through here.
I'm sorry.
What's the value on, we're, uh...
Two ten. Two hundred and ten thousand.
Two hundred and ten?
So, what, what, what were the taxes on that?
I did not look that up.
About four thousand.
I'd say, yeah, that's probably about right.
Yeah, somewhere in there. In the area that they purchased it in, right.
Yes. They purchased it for a little over, let's see, dock stamps were four seventy, two fifty, so... The dock stamps were four seventy, two fifty, two twenty-five, I'm not, can't do that in my head.
It's some, it's somewhere in that area, I, I was at the meeting when we approved it, I, that's one of the boards that I sat on.
And I, I said two hundred and ten thousand and that's true on the real estate, there's also twenty-five thousand of personal property. And that would be exempt as well.
It would, it would.
So, it's, it's really two thirty-five technically.
Well, my point is, you know, we've already done the budgets, finished everything out, and now they're coming after we've closed our deal, now that shortens everything up. It's four thousand dollars, but it still comes out of money that's been account, you know, has been accounted for.
There's not, there's not a whole lot you can do about it, really, I mean, it's...
There's nothing you can do.
Well, and the way I understand it is, they... Did they submit it in time?
They did, it should've come before the board.
That's what my point is.
It was June fifteenth is when they submitted.
Should've been here before, it would've been excluded out of this year's budget. Now, it's in this budget.
And I can't speak to that.
I, I realize.
Yeah, I, I don't know, so it was on a desk and...
It wouldn't be so much, well, I guess it would be kind of in the budget, but it's more into the total valuation.
Yes.
It's in the total.
Um, zero one, zero, six, uh, zero six two three five one. Zero six two three five one. There you go.
So, my point to that is simply that, um...
I think it was, it was two ten.
It wasn't really their fault.
I'm not blaming anybody, but if the fact remains it wasn't done in a timely fashion, somebody's fault, somebody's still the fault because it's already been accepted into this year's budget, now we're pulling it back out.
I believe that that's correct, I believe that...
That is correct, yes.
That it, um, in, in the, it should've been in the three point six billion total, and it's not.
It's part of that four hundred thousand dollar increase valuation and all the, you know, all the, all the...
It was taxed at one sixty-seven last year.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
So, I, I guess going back...
Eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand was the value.
But this year it was, it was put in at two...
It was at one ninety.
A sale, oh, it was one ninety, they had it valued at this year, yeah, one ninety. So, it was one ninety and then the personal property coming off of there.
So, the one, there'd be another twenty-five on top of the one ninety then?
If, I didn't look up the personal...
Well, that's what he said.
To be honest, I wasn't sure what I needed, so, thank you.
I'm looking on your, I'm looking on your sheet right here. And it's two ten and twenty-five.
There you go.
No, I think, I think it, I think it missed a window, but I guess it's whatever you fellows want to do.
Well, I, I think Russ's questions bring up a, a bigger question, or his questions are the big question. On how should we handle these things in the future? Why does it come to the board for approval if we have no choice in the matter? That is, that is, that is the most oxymoronic thing I've ever heard.
Well, we, we, we do, we do, we do have a choice.
Well, you do have a choice.
If it doesn't, first of all, it has to meet the, it has to meet the requirement under tax exempt. And if there's any question or anything, we can deny that, and we've done that before.
And our assessor's office has made the recommendation and below that is the recommendation of the board.
We've had some pretty poor recommendations in the past.
And, and if you would deny it, then I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that they could appeal this to Turk.
All of their other properties are tax exempt.
All their other properties are tax exempt.
Right, and I don't think this particular parcel with this particular agency is...
Issue.
The issue. I think the process as a whole is a, is a problem. And, um, I, I would like to see the board adopt the policy, you know, in the very near future that says any, any permissive exemptions will take effect the following year.
Prior to the budget.
Prior to the budget. Because if you're, if you're already, if that dollar amounts included in the valuation at the moment, at the time that we set the budget for the county, then that's the way it should stay.
I think this should be the first example of right here.
My guess is that's what happens normally.
That is what happens normally.
Normally it's a, it's not, it's a non-issue. The only issue here is where it says, received in time, but never put on the agenda for the board to...
That was back in June, which would explain a few things.
So, we're covering, we're covering somebody's tracks again, and I don't know if that's our job to do.
Some in the, well, I guess, from a technical standpoint, no, but it's our assessor's office.
But are we doing it against the taxpayer?
It was the ass, the assessor's office should've gotten to that, uh, sooner, and it didn't happen due, due to the circumstances.
And I don't know if the fact that you have to vote on those, is that statutory?
I'm trying to read the instructions, because I've never had such trouble with this.
Jean, I think, I think it is, I think, I think the rec...
It is, I'm not sure you can just...
I think the recommendation comes to the, to the assessor's office. The assessor's office either goes through the little test, whatever it is, to make sure that it is, uh, tax exempt, and then it's, it comes to the board for final approval. And that, I, I believe that's statutory, I may be wrong, but I think it is.
I don't have a problem with the fact that it, that it's exempt or, you know, that it qualifies, I have a fact, the fact is that we've already created a budget here, we've got to work out of that budget now, and this thing is taking, reversing our budget, shaking money out of the budget that it was supposed to put in.
Conversely, conversely, there are properties that previously were part of a permissive exemption, which have now sold to private individuals who are going on the tax rolls after the...
But those are in, those are already in the budget, those have already been projected into the budget, I'm sure.
Well, they were exempt, and now, and they're going back in.
They were exempt, but they're no longer exempt. So, so that tax, that tax money, that tax money will be, will go back in.
They'll go back in.
But that money's already been prorated into our, our budget as well.
No, that money wouldn't have been prorated into your budget.
I don't think so, because, yeah, I mean, we sold a building that just went tax exempt.
Your building over here had a church in Scotts Bluff or two that I can think of.
Yeah, but they'll go into this year, they were already in this year's budget, weren't they, huh?
No.
Nope.
Those sales should've been recorded to go into this year, wouldn't they? They're not gonna, you're not gonna skip a year.
I don't...
Because they, those cutoffs, they'd start at twenty-three, so it'd go into twenty-three budget, it's gotta be started...
Probably, I didn't bring that up because...
Probably, we wouldn't have had them in our valuation.
The bottom line is, this was, this was submitted in time, it just didn't get to us, that's, that's the whole...
They did, they did what they needed to do.
They need, they did what they needed to do, it didn't come to us because of the circumstances in the assessor's office.
Maybe it's not in the valuation.
Well, that's...
If it was already permitted, maybe it wasn't, it was already excluded.
Might, wasn't in the valuation, but it'd be nice to see that.
Yeah, may not be.
I think we're already doing it.
I would think that they would not have been made exempt, if it hadn't gone before the BOE.
This particular one was not exempt.
So, my bigger question would be, and that Russ brings up a good point, that, um, so let's just say that that's the case, let's just say that they should've been exempt. And that maybe by our action today, we make them exempt. And then the question's gonna be, so I'm assuming that then they're, that's for the tax year twenty-three, payable in twenty-four, I believe. And, um, so the question would be, is if we don't get that money, then I'm assuming that means the school doesn't get their portion, we don't get our portion, everybody doesn't get their portion, would be my guess.
That's right, so we're taking it not, only from us. We're making a decision for every other entity in the county, or every other entity that can, can draw from it.
Right. But anyway, I just throw that out, that they'll...
I think we need to back it up to the day it should've been done, prior to the budgets, and that it, it would be correct, but I, I think it missed a window. I don't care how it missed a window, it didn't make the window.
Well, they did what they needed to do and had it here in time.
But where's this money gonna vaporize from, or where's it gonna just, where's it gonna get...
Well, I still think, I still think that you had, just as a, for instance, your building over here, which was exempt, but...
But the day it sold, it should've went on the tax rules those, that day.
When was that sale?
It was June fourth, June something like that, so they will get a yellow card in December, right? Is it, is it yellow, is it a white card, no, what, they'll get a mailing, they'll get their tax taken.
And they're just like us, it pays in the year, so that'll be correct, so I agree.
And we had a church that recently sold to a private individual, so that will go...
That goes the day it was sold, it'll be...
And that was after, after the fact.
Uh, it was in July, wasn't it?
It was after June?
Yes.
So, it'll go on the following year, but it'll still, it starts the day then the sale, they start paying taxes the day of the sale.
We'll go on this year.
We'll get our first payment next May. We will get our portion of these taxes in this budget year.
In May, in May.
Yeah, so, you know, you lose one, you gain one.
Yeah. I'm, actually, overall, I think it's gonna be a net positive to the county.
Yeah, but it, well, anytime you, you sell something, it's gonna start moving into there, but we can't use that money to pick up this money, it doesn't work that way.
I understand that.
Yeah, it is, that money isn't gonna pick up when we're shortfuling this year, it doesn't work.
I think, though, we have to look at this, that they did everything that they could do correct.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not going to punish these folks.
They did what they needed to do.
They did what they need to do, it just didn't get to us.
I get what you're saying, but I just think that...
But I think there's gonna be others just like the two that you mentioned, the bank building, the church, and there's gonna be others coming along the line that'll make up the difference, so I think it'll be a...
It's just a process.
And the assessor's office will indeed send out intent to tax notices. I, I think I brought something to Kina the other day and she's looking at that and she's like, I think this needs on the tax rolls and told you.
And we got it.
You just found out about it. And we go through the tax list correction process all year long, plus or minus, which was not in our budget, but we do it all year long.
I realize all that, but this, you know, this was supposed to have been recorded on, on a date, which it wasn't.
Well, the bottom line is, we don't wanna penalize these folks, because they met their requirement. And if they, they dropped the ball, it was counted, we need to go through with change recommendation.
Correct.
It wa, it wasn't a taxpayer issue, it was a personnel issue.
So, we gotta move forward and...
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove this exemption.
I move that we approve this exemption.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other further discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Yes.
Four, yes, Meyer, Blue, Knapper, Harris, one, no, Raisig?
Okay, next item is discuss and consider permissive exemption for parcel zero one zero three five seven seven nine three, Skipper's Cupboards, Inc.
Right, and I have recommended a denial pursuant to the TIP agreement that's on record, these... Says in the TIP agreement, this never should've been sold.
If you take a TIP agreement, you don't get an exemption.
Well, it says in the TIP agreement that you cannot convey the redevelopment site or structures thereon to any entity which would be exempt from the payment of real estate taxes or cause a non-payment of such real estate taxes.
You're basically protecting them, aren't you?
Protecting.
Yeah, I mean, by not giving them the exemption, you know, it's, it can't do that.
Well, can't, well, it never should've been sold to Skipper's Cupboard.
We, we discussed this last year, I think.
It's been discussed.
Yes, this is the first time Skipper's Cupboards have come up.
Yes.
That tip is, has been ended. That tip is done.
It has?
Yes.
As of when?
Um, I got notification of it.
Wouldn't that go through the assessor's office as well?
Well...
Honest, I think that that's when I sent to Ruth. You might wanna table that, might do research for you.
How about if we do that?
That'd be fine.
I'm good with that.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm slow. Ken, Russ?
Well, I hit my buttons hard enough, yeah.
Well, I was behind, so...
Jean, do you recall what the discussion was on the first time this came up, it was on the sale of, of the property, I believe?
I don't, I, yeah.
Heather, do you, Heather, do you remember the discussion we had, I think it was on the, when they were buying the property or something like that?
When he tried to get it...
That parcel has been kind of a mess because it wasn't sold, even when it was part of the TIP, and, um, they thought they were gonna be able to make it tax exempt, because it was part of the TIP, they were not able to make it tax exempt. And so, at one point, and I'm not sure if it still does have, but it did have a tax sale on it. So, we need to probably just do some more research on that parcel.
Do they still own the building, are they still in the building, using the building? Okay? And they're just asking for exemption now?
Yes.
And if the TIP thing is cleaned up, then they would be eligible for the, for the...
If the TIP is off of it, they should be eligible.
Okay, and we'll find that out for the next time, okay? We'll just do that.
I did not know that, I was not aware of that, so we'll do some further checking.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
I would think that would be big news.
That would be big news, he would be super happy.
But it needs to be verified as well, that's exactly right.
That's what you're doing.
Thanks for doing it, Heather.
Okay, all right, with that, I need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization, please.
I move that we go out of the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Sorry. Ken, Russ, Mark?
Again, my button's not working very well, there we go, gotcha.
Okay, to close?
Close, please.
And you've got five yeses?
Thank you. Uh, next item is discuss, consider approval of the Veteran Service Committee recommendation for the appointment of Gregory Ferguson to a five-year term on the Scotts Bluff County Veteran Service Committee.
And Matt provided you with a letter with his recommendation?
Right.
Oh, here he is, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
So, we've had, uh, Tom Aaron's on the service committee for over fifteen years, and he asked if he could step down after this five-year commitment. Uh, what we did was we went back to the VFW, because we've got one member from each organization, American Legion DAV, um, we've got American Legion Mitchell, or excuse me, Morale, and then we have the VFW representative, Greg's a combat veteran that served in the National Guard here. And I think he'd be a good fit, VFW throughout, um, I believe they signed the, the document that you guys have in front of you for working base, and Greg Ferguson is a new committee member.
Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for approval and then we'll have discussion.
I move that we approve the recommendation.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, open it up for any discussion, anything else you wanna add, Matt?
No, sir.
I know Mr. Ferguson, he'd be a great asset on that committee.
Is he the committee that, like, when they, what, did you evaluate?
Under my oversight, yes, sir.
That's great, okay, that's a good board.
He's a little younger, um, as you know, our veteran populations get a little older here, uh, veterans, Greg's a little bit younger veteran, and I think he'd be a good asset to the team, and it would help me through the fight, so...
Okay. Any other discussion? Record your votes, please. I need something, there we go.
We need badges.
I don't know how much harder to push it.
Five yeses?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank, thank you, Matt. Next item. Discuss to consider approval of a ten thousand dollar grant for the holiday activities for Midwest Theater, Brenda.
All right, so, um, like I always do, I will remind everyone that this is money that is an incentive, an event incentive that would come out of the promotional grant, and all of that is lodging tax dollars. So, the Midwest Theater has requested ten thousand dollars, um, to add to the overall holiday feel for, for downtown. Her goal is to bring back the nostalgia of the old West Theater, or the, the Midwest Theater and the old Christmas celebrations that they used to have, decorating in the fifties, of course, Santa, but the main thing is to bring back some of the older family types activities, movies and such. And we just heard today, um, that the Midwest Theater will be on the Nebraska Holiday Passport, which is fantastic, that brings a lot of people to town. It's a short window of time for people to travel in the winter months, and that is really helpful to us because that is our shoulder season, so we really want to try anything we can do to get people here, um, other than just May through September. And the highlight of the season for them is going to be, um, Rhythm of Dance Christmas Special. So, the good thing about this is it's going to take place the same weekend as the Very Merry Market, so there will be a lot of people in town. They've done a great job of marketing outside of the hundred mile, um, radius, and they're doing a lot of promotions to encourage people to stay here by offering hotel packages and restaurants. And the group is actually a Celtic step dance, and they're coming from Uke, from the UK. So, it's not gonna be like anything that we typically get to see in a season, and they're world champion Irish dancers and, um, Irish music as well. They're just going to add a little bit more of a holiday style and flair to what they normally do. And the committee felt that it was a good idea because there again, it is, um, shoulder season, their marketing package looks fantastic for getting people in for that weekend, and plus, it builds on cultural, cultural experiences in the valley. So, it was recommended that you approve the ten thousand dollars for the event, and I've invited Tina to be here, she...
I was just going to introduce her, but go ahead.
Yeah, she probably knows a little bit more about...
For those that don't know, this is Tina Worthman, she's the new executive director for the Midwest, doing an awesome job down there, I, she really is.
Thanks, Ken. Um, yeah, we are, um, it announced today, as Brenda said, that we're on the Holiday Passport. We're of twenty, one of twenty of the locations across the state that are going to be part of the passport, um, and eighty different destinations, um, applied, and we were one of the twenty. So, we're pretty excited, we are the only ones in the Scotts Bluff Gearing area that are actually on it. Um, so, we plan between all of those activities, the, um, the Rhythm of the Dance is gonna be quite phenomenal, the ten thousand dollars will actually go towards a lot of that, it's an expensive show to bring in. But, um, we also, and I'm not sure how men don't love this idea as much, but we're going to stream the Hallmark Channel in the theater during the Christmas season, so you can go get some... so you can go get some popcorn and go sit in the theater and watch a Hallmark Christmas movie.
Watch another movie, yeah.
I mean, you know.
I could write those movies.
Well, they're all the same, but.
I could tell you how they start, what the middle is, and how the ends.
They're all the same too, but they're Christmas comfort.
Just different people, doing exactly the same thing, so it's not a big deal.
We're pretty excited about that.
I think you have an interested gentleman.
Not by my choice, we have one TV in the house.
I was gonna say, his wife might be, but, um, so, between that and with the Holiday Passport, some of our promotional things were going to be in the area, but we're also going to market to Eastern Nebraska as well because people all over the state try to get these passport stamps, and so we have a much bigger market to work with than we even had originally thought, so we're pretty excited.
Have you announced all of these already?
That is tomorrow, because season ticket holders, previous ticket holders, which Ken is one, so have their seats still reserved, so we're opening that season up tomorrow, so people can get their.
Some really, really interesting and fun things coming.
There are, thanks, Ken.
It really is.
Yeah, we're excited, we're doing lots of good things, we're going to try to be, um, definitely a part of all of activities in Scottsbluff and Gearing during the holiday season.
A good variety of performing arts and everything, something for everybody.
We try.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove the request.
I would move we approve the request for a ten thousand dollar grant for the holiday activities at Midwest Theater.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Other than thanks for all your hard work on it, guys, we appreciate that. Okay, record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. All right, next item is receive, uh, the update regarding the USA Cycling. Tina, or Tina, I'm sorry.
No, here, come on.
Go ahead, Tina, if you want to, if you want to.
That was until last time, but I decided to wait, um, till I had some of the definite figures in section and till we had had our last meeting, um, with, um, USA Cycling. And so, we had, um, five hundred and thirty-three participants, only thirty injuries, only one was, you know, a broken bone. Everything else was just concussions, they get those all the time. So, there, yeah, no big deal there, right? And, um, forty-two, forty-two states were represented, riders from Florida, all the way from Florida to Alaska. We also had a gentleman from London, I have no idea how much it cost him to get his bike here, but that'd have to be a pretty expensive venture for him. And the good news is, is that we now know that we have a complete year to plan two thousand twenty-four. As you know, the last one, we only picked up in April, so we didn't have much time, just right at six months to try to put the whole thing together. And, uh, so next year, uh, for two thousand twenty-four, it will be an extremely different setup. The courses will change, the distance of the courses will change, and there will be multiple community events added. I feel that was our only mistake, we didn't prepare the community, they had no idea what it was all about, they had no idea. And while we thought we were doing exactly what we should have done, they just didn't quite understand the process. But I, I just have a couple of comments that I wanted to, to share with you. This race brought out the, the most outpouring of positive comments and stories from participants in social media. I think they've kind of had a few problems in the past with some events, but this one, because everyone was so excited about it being new. And, uh, so they were really excited about the, the social media activity. And, um, the guys that ride on the moto, they said that this was the safest gravel, gravel race they have ever seen. The safest they have ever participated in, and at no point did they even feel like anything bad could happen to anybody because it was just so well organized and so safe. And, um, participants said that this is one of a kind gravel race, and they would come here to race gravel any day of the week compared to some of the races that they'd been in. And I know that if you mention the word gravel here, no, I mean, we know what it means, but we don't know what it means as far as racing goes. We know what mountain biking is, probably Tour de France, um, BMX, that's what we think of. And that's because gravel is brand new to USA Cycling. They haven't done this for a long time at all, I mean, Aaron is the one who really brought it here, um, and Matt Hutt. And so, now we're, other people are catching on, and it's, it's going to be a huge thing in the next three to five years. But, um, the gravel cyclists are kind of the rebels in the cycling world, uh, you know, so to speak, and and that's why they choose gravel, because they don't like all the rules and all the fluffy stuff that goes along with cycle racing, and that's why they really enjoyed this. I talked to, um, the tourism director from Roanoke, Virginia, and he met me early on Saturday morning, the day of the race, and he said, "I came here with the full intentions of bidding this race in the future," but he said, "I don't know, I don't know how anybody can beat this community." He said, "It's just absolutely wonderful, the course, it is beautiful here, and nobody knows about this part of Nebraska." So, he promised me he was going to help spread the word, I don't know if he will or not, but, um, and I think the biggest thing was is that they said that we changed the game and won over the crowd, and they can't wait till next year.
I, I did have the opportunity to talk, I, he was from Los Angeles, actually, was around the announcer's booth that, that first morning. Because I don't know a whole lot about it, I had no idea, uh, JR Brester was there, he said he was busy, his shop was full, I mean, did a lot of work. But he was pointing out, he said, "This is a big deal to these folks," and, and they was, he was pointing at a, one of the bicycles was like sixty-five thousand dollars for the bike, up to a hundred and fifty thousand they will spend, and sometimes even more than that for a bicycle.
I know, and I wanted one for three thousand dollars, that's all Chris wouldn't buy.
Didn't get it, didn't get it, huh? I'm sorry.
I know, three thousand dollars.
But this is, this is a big deal, and, and I, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, the, the couple of folks that I talked to from, one was from South Carolina or somewhere, just loved it, absolutely loved it here, and they said they will be back and they'll tell their friends about it.
Yeah, we have a way bigger chance for more people next year.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And that's just because so many people had already made other commitments that late in the season. So, this year, I mean, the new date will be dropped in a couple of weeks, and when that happens, people will make this commitment.
Spread the thank you to everybody involved, Brenda, and I know they're not here tonight, but I know a lot of people put in a lot of, lot of hours to get this thing here, and to make it the, the success that it was. And it's going to get better, but thank everybody, we don't, we don't have any idea who they all are.
And here's my fun.
I saw that.
Yeah, so, Ian Swenson, um, was the men's elite, um, fifteen thousand dollar winner, and then Lawrence Swenson Stevenson.
Sure, you guys are close, yeah, I know.
Yeah, Swenson and Lauren Stevenson, so, yeah, so both elites, um, slaying my jersey. You know, what's kind of funny around here is that when we order shirts, we order largers and extra larges. When you live in the Midwest, Nebraska communities, there wasn't a one of these cyclists that didn't have like an extra small or a small, so they handed me off a large, and I didn't know if I should be offended or not, but, that's what I got, so.
Well, again, thank you, guys, everybody, for all your hard work.
Right, and that's right.
You're welcome. He's going to get his sixty-five thousand dollar bike, and then he's going to.
I bet he will, then.
Buy a new pickup truck. Okay, next item, thank you, Brenda. Discuss and consider the approval of signatures of reassignment of the ambulance contract as approved on September fifth, contingent upon the dates, uh, contingent upon the updates regarding the detention center transport, Randy?
Randy, I'm here, President Valley Ambulance, and this is brought back to you, Commissioner Reizig asked that we reword some things, and thank you for pointing that out.
I like the way you have now.
Yeah.
How, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with it.
That's what I tell you, it doesn't look like we're getting favors.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and thanks for pointing that out. So this has been through our legal division and through, uh, debut banks and everything, it's been approved, so, just coming back to you, uh, this was a part of the contingency part, I'm just bringing it back to you.
We did, we've already approved it with contingent on these changes, so you're just, okay. So we don't have to take any action on?
Do we have to, do we have to take action, accept these changes?
No.
It was contingent, it was contingent on these changes.
Okay, well, I, I like what's there, but I don't know how we tell them that.
Oh, you could.
Tell, tell Randy.
You've got a discussion item, so.
Yeah.
And I'll pass it on. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Last item on the general agenda. Discuss, consider the correction to resolution setting the property tax request.
I've got information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What I, what I discovered is my discrepancy had all to do with the budgeted transfers and how it was presented in the newspaper. My first, um, spreadsheet shows, I mean, this is all, if you look at the next page, this is what goes in the newspaper for to advertise that we're having budget hearings. So, my first spreadsheet shows what we, how we reported prior year, next column, what was published in the newspaper, the corrected amounts, and then the difference. And like I said, the difference was the transfers. So from general, general fund, we anticipate transferring five million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand to like detention center fund, the road fund, um, the flood funds and comm center. And if you want more detail on that, I mean, that was all on those budget work papers. Highway bridge back, a hundred and twenty-four thousand goes down into the bond fund. Self-funded insurance, insurance, three million, three hundred thirty-eight thousand goes into the funds to pay for health insurance claims. That's my difference.
How mu, how much difference was there in dollars?
Uh, the total, if you look at the front, front page, eleven million, three hundred seventy-five is the transfers. So it's like money comes in, we move it somewhere else in order to pay their, to help pay their bills, but it all goes into the general fund now. We didn't used to do this this way, this is our second year of putting everything into general and then moving the money.
So that's what the hiccup was, because you normally have that one.
And then, yes, and then if you look at the bottom of my first spreadsheet, by going from last year's, we had total sixty million dollars in the proposed budgetary dispersments, and then without all of those transfers in there, it looked like our expenditures were going to go down fifteen percent. So I was reading through the resolution, and it already was flowing this information into that resolution, and I did not, and I didn't catch that ahead of time, showing that we went down fifteen percent. That was not true. By putting the budgetary transfers in, we are increasing by three percent.
We had discussed a little bit about how that stuff moves forward, you know, in our budget areas.
Yeah, we did.
And I still, you know, I don't quite get exactly how it works, but I think this is going to help us, you know, with what you've got now.
Well, with explanations, it's nothing new. But anyway, I just wanted to show you the document, documentation, trying to support it. I did talk to the Auditor of Public Accounts, Rachel Whitler is her name, and it, their recommendation is that you do publish the changes, the corrections. Although she said, because to publish a page that looks like this is costing us, what, five hundred, six hundred?
For sure, four eighty, but that was different than what was on their statement.
Okay.
What was on the statement?
Higher, but we're talking about it, we're working, yeah, we're talking about it.
But I do not, she said you can put an explanation out there and do a convinced.
I, I've had a mistake in like a notice of election before, and I just put what I missed. Or, like, I spelled someone's name wrong, and just the correction of it.
Do the correction, you know, we can talk about that, and I can just click the lines where we did correct.
Okay, with that, I would, uh.
But our bottom line never changed, our tax asking hasn't changed, everything stayed, it's marginal plays, you just moved our numbers.
Yes.
So, did, 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 forgive, forgive me, did we approve the resolution with this change? So we don't have to take any action on this?
Right.
This is just explanation only.
I gave you a copy of what the resolution that Kelly and I produced.
Okay.
Because she had to look at, I had you signing this with your, but then she found an example where it wasn't, you approved it, it's in the minutes. We don't need your signatures, so she just hand typed it, and this is what went to the Auditor of Public Accounts, was the one that says three point three two percent.
Okay.
The corrected version.
So this is the item that Charlie had brought up last time? And, um, so I want to be sure then that so we had approved it, contingent upon you checking it out and?
And explaining the difference to you, so.
Right.
Charlie wanted an explanation of line five, but you guys approved it four to one. Already, anyway, she's just showing you how she corrected it, she looked into it for you guys, and now she's explaining it as Charlie had requested. It wasn't contingent upon anything, I don't think.
Well, I'm pretty sure that was a motion, didn't, didn't you make the motion?
Well, um, I don't remember the exact words I used.
It should be in her minutes.
She's pulling out the minutes.
What time they use the unit, it was like at noon, noon fifteen?
Uh, do, do, do. Approved resolution for setting property tax request, is that the one?
Probably.
There's two of them, yeah.
Yes, there were two that day, and this was the resolution for setting the property tax request.
Yeah, that's the one with the one name, yeah, that's the one, so we did approve it.
I have Reizig making the motion and Blue with a second.
Right.
Fourier's in one name.
So the, the, the resolution was approved, so we're, we're good to go on it then. And now all you're doing is making a, a explanation as to where the difference was in the numbers.
Yes.
Okay? All right, very good, thank you very much. Moving on to old business, we have none. Uh, portion of the, the agenda where we, the Board of Commissioners will receive public comments of any items on this meeting, or suggestions for items at a discussion at a future meeting, won't take any action on anything. Is there anybody in the audience of which is to speak to the board? And hearing none, we'll move on. Board and staff reports, we'll start with board. Russ, do you have anything?
I have a question, I guess, for Kelly, uh, did you get anything resolved with the Housing Authority on those election questions they had?
I thought we decided I was done trying.
Is that right?
To resolve it.
I did, I guess, you and I haven't had that, I have a meeting there tomorrow, I just was wondering if you had anything for me to read.
Just reminder.
We take their recommendation for you guys to act on it, and?
That's the way it's always been, you know, and so, I just wanted to be able to relay that back.
Okay, Mike, anything?
I have one of them.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask Steve, did they start, uh, Bridge on County Road five this? It's thirteenth, like, I got a call from a landowner this morning, they were asking about, uh, I guess, Riker's, one of their foremen went out and is renting some property to state equipment, so I didn't know if they were out moving stuff in already, or just were that. I thought it was thirteen, thirteenth, okay.
And that's County Road five?
County Road five Bridge. Okay, that's all, Mike.
Mike?
Uh, this last weekend, uh, our cert team assisted, uh, Gearing PD and Scottsbluff County Sheriff's Office with, uh, traffic control at key locations for a marathon, went very smoothly. Weekend before that, uh, I was road captain for the Gold Star Ride in Western Nebraska. We ended our ride back here behind the administrative building to look at the monuments back there, and uh, one of the mothers, one of the young men on the monument was very pleased and very thrilled to, to have that monument here in Scottsbluff County representing the western half of Nebraska, so, good job.
Anything else?
Just a lot of meetings.
Several meetings coming up this, this week, um, it's always busy, the one during the week. The, the one thing I, I'm going to bring it up again, I did last meeting, but we didn't have as many, uh, department head and, uh, elected officials. We have the State of the Valley coming up in three weeks, or whatever it is, I can't remember. But my presentation is going to be where we showcase, I want to showcase departments. Last year we took tax bills and showed them where the tax money is going, and I want to do a little bit more on it for this year. So what I'm going to need, if you can get it submitted, a PowerPoint to Lisa, and I don't know, are you going to put it together, are we going to ask anybody else for help, or? We'll figure, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, you suggested maybe Brenda could help you.
Brenda? Thank you, I was going to ask you. But what, what your tax, tax asking was for the year, what your expenditures are, and then maybe a picture, something to represent your particular department, whatever it is, whoever wants to participate, I'm not asking everybody to do it. something to represent your particular department, whatever it is, whoever wants to participate. I'm not asking everybody to do it. Heather's trying to hide back there. You don't, you don't, you don't have to do it. And I, and we're looking more at the, at the bigger budgets, the roads, the sheriff's department, communications, those kinda things. Uh, just to show the, the folks at that meeting kinda where the money's going and, and get some pats on the back. That's, that's my goal this year, so. Anyway, pass it around, pass, let, pass the word so we can get that, get that PowerPoint put together so I don't look any stupider than I normally do when I go to that, so, I appreciate that. Mark?
I wanted to mention certainly our sheriff's office.
Absolutely, yeah.
In the incident with the hostage thing and I know we were heavily involved with that. I've heard a, a lot of people comment that again, the outcome ended up being pretty much the best we could have expected, I think. And we appreciate everything that you've, you did and who, the sheriff's office that is, and then whoever else from the county that was part of helping with that. I appreciate it and, yeah, the outcome seemed to be good. The, I mentioned Kelly and we're planning on jail tour next meeting. We need to do it in this month. And then, the other question I had was, I noticed downstairs that we're closed for Indigenous Peoples' Day or something like that. What is that?
Columbus Day.
Columbus.
Columbus Day.
Oh, Columbus Day. Can we call it Columbus Day?
I don't think you can get off if you don't call it Columbus Day.
I think the, the notice on this door says Columbus Day on the front door here.
This one didn't.
We only show Columbus Day on our exemption.
I know it is Columbus Day and I think we oughta call it Columbus Day.
Well, that's the only day we have showing exempted, I mean, that's what it says on our.
Well, that's what's in the handbook.
That's what's in the handbook and I don't think we can call anything but that.
Well, I just assumed it'd be the Columbus Day.
What's that Heather? I, I, I just saw Columbus Day when I came in, so I didn't read all, I didn't read the whole sign. Columbus Day enclosed, those are the two things I noticed.
Well, that's what I, I thought we closed on Columbus Day. And that's what I'm interested in.
We don't have indigenous anything in our handbook.
Right. So, just wanna mention.
For sure.
For sure.
Okay.
Or nothing that we approved anyway, once said that.
I was agi-, I was, is it all?
Yeah.
I was against the state putting Indigenous Peoples' Day on Columbus Day. If they're gonna celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, they should give them their own day.
Should get their own day.
Get their own day. Let Columbus have his own day. But if we did that, then we'd probably be looking at another holiday.
Yeah, that's scary.
That's all right.
Um, so, the legislative, the, uh, NACO legislative conference is not this coming Thursday, but the following Thursday.
It is the twelfth.
The twelfth in West Point, Nebraska.
Just a little ways away. And I have election conference in the state.
So, um, that is, if you ever ha-, if you've ever wanted to try to get a piece of legislation passed or, um, have any ideas there.
It was very interesting last year.
It was.
When it was here, it was interesting.
Yeah. Last year, that conference was, was actually here, um, at the Weeburg Center. Adrian Smith came and visited and a couple, well, because our state senator was not available, so. But anyway, if you have any ideas there, that is where NACO will create its legislative platform for the year. So, yeah, just any, it doesn't have to be a real formal idea, you know, it's just, if it's just a, you know, a aha moment you might have, you know, send me a text message, give me a phone call.
Cleanup SID election statutes for me. I say it every year.
I've had a couple people come up to me and ask about the importance of, um, paper ballots and doing away with mail-in balloting. And if as a county, we have any sort of autonomy in, in conducting our own election. So, that's something I would like some more information about. You know, my comment to this person was, you know, what, what difference does it make if Scotts Brook County has mail-in balloting or not? Very intelligent guy said, well, you can't blame everybody else if you're not doing what you can do. So, those were, do we, as, as election commissioner, do you have autonomy in that? Does a county have autonomy in making those sorts of decisions saying, we will not take mail-in balloting after a certain date or are we required to do what the state tells us to do?
Right, it's, there are applications that.
The Secretary of State?
Yes. The forms are, I'm sure statewide.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Maybe even the mail-in counties can have early vote by mail. The, the registered voter so wishes.
Okay.
Here's the button there.
I think that's all I had. Oh, I did talk to Ruth Sorenson about permissive exemptions and she sent me this statute here. Statute seventy-seven dash two oh two point three. Gives us the authority to review permissive exemptions that have already been granted. And we can pull those back and, and reassess those at any time. If we were to do that, um, and choose to deny an exemption that's already been granted, the property will be added to the tax rules retroactive to January one. And then, we had some more discussion about, you know, what, what, uh, why does, why did these permissive exemptions, exemptions come to the board? If, uh, for us to make a decision on items, if, um, you know, there's statute in state law that says you meet these requirements and you get an exemption. And she said, no, that's not how it works. It is, it is still a decision for the county board to make.
Five oh one C three does not make it automatic.
It doesn't make you automatic to get an exemption. So, um, I'm interested in reviewing how we grant those. And maybe, uh, one thing I asked for, um, I think right when Ramos left was, um, you know, like we do the, the vehicle exemptions, we always know what the tax loss is. Heather always tells us this is a tax loss of, you know, one thousand two hundred dollars or four hundred and seven dollars. I would like to see that on all of our permissive exemptions for pro-, for real property. And then, I also would like those sorts of, um, I don't wanna have to make those decisions, uh, like Mark Harris says, the night of the presentation. I would like us to be able to s-, kinda slow play, walk through it and really do get some solid research behind, um, our decision-making process. And I know it comes with an assessor recommendation, um, but as, as Russ had said earlier in the meeting, I think there are times when we have not gotten thorough, uh, recommendations. It kinda almost seems like a rubber stamp or a pass, the assessor's office or the assessor recommendation in the past has just been a pass-through, um, a box to check and then it comes to us. I really think that this board should, should take a longer, harder look at, at those permissive exemptions.
I'd really like to see a public hearing with those, for the people in that district that are gonna lose that tax revenue would have a say in that as well.
So, the other, yeah, the, that's the other part is, um, we have school districts, cities, fire districts, all these other entities that are gonna lose that tax revenue. And I think that there should be, and I think we do, there are public hearings, right? Every, every permissive exemption is a public hearing, which is.
I don't think we have a public hearing.
Published, but I don't know that, I don't know that that, I think it meets the letter of law, I don't think it meets the spirit of the law. Where we should probably be informing these other entities, these other.
I agree.
Taxing entities what the tax loss is and exactly why we make our decision on, on permissive exemption. The, one more thing I had was, um, you know, conservation easements are also, you know, we, we've pretty much passed all of those that have come before us. I will, usually, we have a lawyer here, um, representing the, the interests of the person requesting the confr-, conservation easement, but we never have a lawyer representing us on those conservation easements.
Yeah, that is a good point.
So, that's another item I think we should probably, um, consider. And then, the other thing I wanna bring up is something I brought up, um, a couple meetings ago is, you know, some of the ideas that we came up with at budget time. You know, I, I don't want us to lose sight of those things, um, whether it be consolidating offices, consolidating, um, uh, job descriptions, um, hiring freezes, those sorts of things. I wanna, I wanna keep those things at the forefront of our mind, um, that we're not just, we're, so we're not scrambling and grasping for, for ways to save money next year. But I would like to, you know, make this a good eleven-month process of preparing for the budget, the budget season next year. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring that up every, every meeting until we.
Till we do one, don't we?
Till we do, do that.
Agreed. Good for you.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, start with staff, Lisa?
I, I have a couple, a couple things. October twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, our detention center is presenting a, 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 a leadership seminar here at the, at the Gearing Civic Center. You should have received an email on it. I encourage you to participate. We get a, we get to participate for like fifty dollars a person.
What's it called?
Someone say something.
Leadership conference.
Leadership conference.
Thank you.
Former military correctional, former military veteran and a former corrections officer.
Right, it'll be, um, provided to the community too. People can come from outside the county as well.
October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, which buts into the State of the Valley address, but.
I, I did receive the email.
And yet, they signed up by October thirteenth, I believe.
I think so. And if you put in the SB county, you can get the county rate.
Right.
So, and if you can only go one day and you're interested, I guess they'll work with us. So, anyway, it's, it's a neat opportunity, I guess, that's what Bonnie Koten was telling me about. She, they've heard him present at some of the jail seminars they go to. Very dynamic speaker. He'll come out revitalized, so. I had that and I just wanna throw out there that, um, Matt Myers, he didn't stick around, but he has been potentially asked if he might be willing or would participate as being the VSO in Kimball County. They cannot hold on to their VSO.
At, at where?
Kimball.
Kimball County, okay.
They, they don't budget a lot. They have a person that works in the office, that is their clerical person, and in, like, last year, they had a guy that come, came in for an hour a day. They tried to boost him up to serve more hours and now he's resigned. So, they're on the hunt and they're considering contracting with a county who might be interested in them. Now, like I said, it's not like Banner County where we would just have all their veterans come here or go down there. They do have a person that'll do a lot of the administrative duties, but she does still need a VSO over her. So, anyway, we have to start considering what that would look like, if he can handle it, and obviously, it would not come for free, so.
Okay. So, you'll have more information on that later as far as funding and whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
She's gonna present it to her commissioners tomorrow as well. I guess dual count, what is it, gentleman that works in Keith County services dual county and I think he charges like six thousand dollars a year to do it, but the veterans all come to him. Where they would like to still have a presence there. And they have approximately three hundred veterans in the area. And with the, with the big missile silo project, they're concerned that, they're, they wanna, they wanna make sure that they can handle anybody else that might be in the community as well.
That number may increase then, you know.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Lisa?
Nope.
Anybody else, Kurt, yeah, anything?
I had a couple quick ones. Um, Kelly and I had talked, uh, about last year, this might tie into some Charlie's, um, comments about paper ballots and voting and, um, just something we'd maybe put in the back of your mind about on election days. There are some communities, some transit agencies that provide free transit to and from polling places. Uh, just something we could do if you, if you wanted to get away from the mail-in or offer that to people to give everyone their fair opportunity uh, to, um, access voting, to get, to get to the polling places. And it is something, like I said, I know other transit agencies are doing. We're a ways out from any of that right now, but it's something that if, if we wanna look at doing it, um, we could get the ball rolling. Starting off our, kinda ties into our, our free week of transit this week, um, with mobility and all that. And I just, a really quick video here that might be of interest to, to you for the State of the Valley, Ken, and maybe even to Brenda for, uh, tourism, but it's a little two-minute, fifty-second video that we put together with Nebraska Department of Transportation and the Mobility Management Team. They've hot, they're highlighting transit agencies throughout the state. If you wanna watch it here real quick, get out of your hair.
My work is so, it changes all the time. They will call me at the last minute in the morning, so I'm always having to call the handy bus. And I just appreciate how patient they are with it, how flexible they are, how they know how life can change so quick. Just with their accommodating me makes my life easier.
I think independence is a basic human need and even a right. Tri-City Roadrunner is somewhat unique in Nebraska that we are a rural transit agency, but we have two routes that run across the tri-cities of Scotts Brook, Gearing and Tarrytown. We run a deviated fixed route and then we also run a demand response service for passengers that live or are going outside of our route corridors to the other smaller communities in the county. Within Scotts Brook, Gearing, Tarrytown, it's two dollars each way. And, and then, outlying, uh, communities is based on mileage, but our maximum rate within the county is five dollars each way.
The people that work for the Roadrunner, you can trust them. I mean, I put my grandson on there and I, I don't worry. I know they're gonna get him where he's going. They're safe, they're kind, they help with everything. I have no access to get his wheelchair into my car and get him anywhere. Now, once he's on the bus and he gets where he's going, and they do all kinds of fun things that he wouldn't get to interact with if we didn't have the Roadrunner. We need it.
Our main goal is to safely get our passengers to and from their destination on time. We try to accommodate every possible passenger at any time within our operating hours.
They care about the public, so they do their best to fit them in.
He would lose his freedom and his access to the outside world if we didn't have the Roadrunner.
By having access to public transit and Tri-City Roadrunner, they can still maintain their freedom, their independence, get to work, go get their groceries, get to their doctor's appointments, whatever they want to do.
I just think that all the people that ride the bus are happy. So, this whole community is, would be lost without the handy bus.
I, I believe that when people have that sense of independence, they feel empowered to go out and, and do more, experience more, see more, and just improve their overall quality and their enjoyment of life.
Nice.
Very nice.
Yeah, I'll do, she did an outstanding job. Some of that drone footage was pretty incredible.
Good job Kurt.
That was, that was free of charge, so.
Nice job. Nice job. Thank you Kurt.
Thanks for that.
All right, is there, are there others?
Yeah, I have forgotten about, oh, sorry. Um, the marathon was mentioned. We did have an expo booth there. Oh, I have a question. Oh, sorry. Um, the Marathon was mentioned. We did have an expo booth there. I'm, my ten years now on the race crew and, um, worked doing all of the marketing for the event. It was a great year, perfect, a beautiful day. I mean, it, you know, aside from the moves thing, which kinda had me a little scared at first. I'm like, oh, I don't know how fast they run, so, um, but it, it was awesome, so kudos to them. And then, um, we will start seeing, um, girls from the Class B state golf showing up, um, towards the end of the week. First day of play is Monday, and then we finish it off Tuesday afternoon. But if you can make it out to the golf course, we'll be at the Scotts Brook Country Club this year. Um, it's our fourth girls tournament, so hopefully, keep your fingers crossed that we have good weather. Winds are minimal, eighty-seven miles per hour, no more than that. Um, and let me see, there's one other thing. Oh, yeah, and then the next week after that, we, um, Gearing is hosting the Nebraska Tourism Convention, so, three days. Um, directors from all over the state and the Nebraska Tourism Commission will be in town for our annual conference.
Very good. Thank you, Brenda. Jean?
Okay, so I have to apologize because I wasn't really sure what you all needed for the permissive exemptions. But let me do some research, and hopefully by the next meeting I can have some bullet points or at least something as to what that process is supposed to be, what it's supposed to look like, maybe provide a little more education to you. And I also have a contact that I can reach out on conservation easements and see what you want.
Thank you, Jean. Jean's been a little busy.
I've been a little busy, so I'm not worried to you.
Just a tad, just a tad busy, yeah.
But we'll come better prepared next time.
Okay, anybody else? Yes?
Um, I just wanted to give you guys an update on what Sherry did in my office. Um, so she scanned, named, and organized nine thousand three hundred and sixty-seven files and six hundred and ninety-two folders.
See, that's pretty...
She did a lot, and now she's, I'm in the assessor's office.
Not bad.
Now she's back in the assessor's office.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Heather, anybody?
I don't have a whole lot. I will be at the NACO Legislative Meeting next week. I'm head of the Legislative Committee for the Treasures, and we do have our MIPS board meeting that week also.
Okay. Tyler, anything? Anybody? Just raise your hands.
Yeah, tell, you, you tell them about our new road.
Oh, yeah, we, uh, the South Mitchell Road that provides access up to our tower site and equipment, uh, up there has been finished by, uh, Carter Russell's crew out there, and it's all been, um, done real nice and seated. And I think we're looking at maybe some rain today at some point, aren't we?
I hope, tonight's a rainy day tomorrow.
It's coming this way.
And so, that'll be good. Uh, so we're excited to have a, a nice easily accessible route up there.
The propane's been delivered as well on Friday, right? Oh, there's a little story behind it. They delivered the pro, we got the road in before last Friday, you know, got it bladed and everything. And they took a propane truck up, and Rick Dirk had called me and said that, the propane truck driver called him and said that a mountain lion ran right across in front of the truck. He stopped the truck and got out, and there was print, uh, footprints that big, and little, little footprints as well, so there's a mother and a cub up there, so.
Wow.
Okay. Anybody else? Steve?
Didn't see him out, she bumped through, didn't she?
You have anything? Kelly?
I'm going to an election conference in, ten, October, eleven, twelve, thirteen. And then we've got Nerma in Kearney the week after that. I don't know, if anybody plans on going?
Seventeen, eighteen.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Staff, anybody? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion that we move into executive session, and that session will be the board, Lisa, Jean, and Mr. Long. So.
I would move we go into executive session to discuss personnel issue.
Okay, hang on, you need to vote, please.
Assuming the board, Kyle, Jean, and Lisa.
Hang on.
Please.
I will second.
Have a motion, is there a second? Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please. Okay, we'll go into session at five forty-four.
We're recording guys.
Oh, yeah. Are you knitting?
Can I fall asleep? No, I was watching the monsoon, man.
How much rain we got?
How is it?
It's...
It's not hail.
Oh, man, I would watch that road right back.
My friend's out south of town, and she's got...
We're gonna be getting...
They got hail?
Not yet.
Yours will be good on flat ground.
Okay, we're back in session at six nineteen. Call the roll, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Here.
Raisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Okay, no action, there's no action to be taken, so with that, we will adjourn.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.